Good evening, and welcome to this forum for Oakland County Commissioner for the 25th District. This program is being presented live today, July 19, 2010, and will be repeated on the schedule I'll describe later on Comcast and Wide Open West Cable. This forum will feature the four candidates who have filed for the two-year term for county commissioner for the 25th District. You will vote for not more than one. The sponsor of this forum is the League of Women Voters Oakland Area. I am Neil Zekman, a member of the League of Women Voters and not a resident of the 25th County Commission District. The League of Women Voters is a trusted, nonpartisan political organization. Our members do the hands-on work to safeguard democracy. While we never endorse a candidate, we are directly involved in shaping the important issues to keep our community strong. As an LWV member, I have the opportunity to contribute in a leadership role such as this one that has great impact on local, state, and even national issues. If you're interested in learning about how you can make a similar impact, I would encourage you to pick up some of the League's information available here tonight, or visit our website at lvvoa, leagueofwomensvotersoaklandarea.org. The League of Women Voters does not endorse any candidate or party. Views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, and the League takes no responsibility for those views. The format for this forum has been established by the League of Women Voters. We ask that the audience remain silent, please, during the forum, and turn off all cell phones. We ask the candidates answer the question with their view only, and not interrupt another candidate. The candidates will be answering written questions submitted by the audience, and screened for duplication and appropriateness by Patricia Finn of the League of Women Voters. Shania Jarrett, who's in the back of the room right now, will be circulating with paper and pencils for your questions. Please turn your questions in to Ms. Jarrett. Candidates will be given two minutes for opening statements in alphabetical order. Closing statements will be one minute in inverse alphabetical order. Candidates will have one minute to answer each question unless I extend or decrease the time for a particular question. All candidates will be allowed equal time to answer each question. Our timer is Fran Fisher. The timer will indicate the amount of time remaining for a candidate's statement or answer, and will indicate when the candidate's time has expired. The candidates are as follows: Craig Covey, Democrat side; Tamiko Gumbelton, on the Democrat side; Ruel McPherson, also on the Democrat side; and Richard Parisi, who's not with us this evening but who was invited to attend tonight's forum. He will be on the Republican side. We'll begin the one-minute...well, actually, it's really the two-minute opening statement with Mr. Covey.
Thank you kindly, and thanks, as always, to the League of Women Voters. In April of 1970, the nation's first Earth Day was held. I got all the neighborhood kids together, and we went and cleaned up a big empty lot, picking up trash and beautifying the area. I then called the local newspapers in my town and got a story in the paper about what we had done. I was 13 years old at the time. If that sounds familiar, it's because I've been doing the same kind of thing ever since. In 1980, I organized a lot of friends and activists and started working on the campaign for Ted Kennedy, who was running for president. I managed to pull together a wide array of Democrats who were pro-women's rights, pro-choice, pro-gay rights, and pro-environmental, and I won my first election and became a delegate to the Democratic National Convention in New York City. I was 23 years old. I share these stories because my whole life has been dedicated to organizing people to work on causes, to make life better for our communities. I was first elected to Ferndale City Council 11 years ago, and I'll never forget the very first issue I worked on. It turns out that dancing was illegal in downtown Ferndale. It was 1999. Now, dancing may not seem like a critical issue, but it was one of the first steps that we took that needed to be done to make our downtown the popular and award-winning gem that it is today. I worked with Mayor Chuck Gettard, and we legalized dancing. Whether it was passing a human rights ordinance, or promoting the city, or raising hundreds of thousands of dollars for worthwhile charities in our region, this is what gets me up in the morning. In the ensuing 40 years since I began this work, my core values have not changed. I believe in being creative. I believe in embracing and valuing all human diversity. I believe that every decision we make must consider the environment and how to keep the earth sustainable, and we must always use wise use of taxpayer resources. These are the priorities I'll take with me to the Oakland County Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Covey. Mr. Covey, Ms. Gumbelton.
Hi, I'm Tamiko Gumbelton, and I'm running for Oakland County Commissioner. I'm running for county commissioner because I care deeply about our community, and I feel more than ever that we need serious, dedicated officials in government. I bring public policy experience, I'm action-oriented, hardworking, and a coalition builder. I'll continue to work in a mature and statesman-like manner. I'll push an aggressive agenda for the residents of Hazel Park, Ferndale, and South Royal Oak. I know how to get things done. I know how things work in government. I've worked at a local, state, and federal level. As a regional manager for U.S. Senator Debbie Stabenow, I've had the opportunity to work in the public and private sector. I've worked with CEOs, I've worked with entrepreneurs, I've worked with citizens, I've worked with state representatives, state senators, county commissioners, and city councils all through the region. I know how to bring money back to Oakland. I've worked on the federal appropriations process, I've worked on federal and state grants. I don't just talk about it, I've actually done it. I bring all these relationships and knowledge to the position of county commissioner. As a small business owner, I know what it takes to run a business, and I know how challenging times are. I've done a budget, I've paid my employees, I've actually been bringing that check home. I see the opportunity for small businesses as well. Seven out of 10 jobs are created by a small business, and we need to support our small businesses and get our residents back to work. I know local governments and neighborhoods are hurting now, and I have the skills to communicate with the residents and also work on regional collaboration. I'll work hard for you, and I ask for your vote August 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gumbelton. Mr. McPherson.
My name's Ruel McPherson. I've been a resident all my life in Oakland County and Hazel Park, 73 years. I feel I have a lot of political knowledge available to support the issues that affect the south end of Oakland County. I was a county commissioner for 20 years, a councilman for eight years in Hazel Park, a constable. I worked for the district courts for many years. I own my own business and hire 19 people. I have eight grandchildren, and I had five children, and I've been married for 51 years. I have great family values, and I'm a people person. I'm a strong supporter of organized labor, and my son is a business agent for sheet metal workers, and I'm glad that he did pursue that career. I have been active with the youth of the cities in the south Oakland area and throughout the state of Michigan. I organized groups of wrestlers. I used to have like 600 wrestlers in our community in elementary school. Those children went on to get college scholarships, some become active in community affairs. I've also been on the National Committee of Criminal Justice Committee. I was very active in the organization of Eight Mile Boulevard, worked with SIMCOG, I was on their board of directors. I'm also a very active member for over 20, 30 years of OSHA, Oakland Livingston Human Service Agency. They selected me as a meritist for all my years of service, and I truly appreciate that, and I continue to be available to help support groups and voice my opinion. I'm not a letter writer to the editors, but I do my work by contacting people and get their feelings, and try to react with other people who support those causes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson. We'll begin the question segment of our forum now. Most questions will have a one-minute time limit, and we will rotate who begins the questioning, giving the first answer for each question. We'll begin with Mr. Covey. Same question then will be given to each of you to answer. Again, one minute. Mr. Covey, what do you think the county should be doing for the 25th District?
Well, first of all, the county has historically not paid enough attention to the southeast corner of Oakland County. Fortunately, as the political situation has become a little more even, I think we're seeing a lot more attention. I think that places like Hazel Park have been ignored. Only recently has the county been paying attention to Ferndale, but that's because we make a lot of noise down here. I think we have to realize that we all sink or swim together, that the county is one unit, Republican, Democrat, north and south. I think that certainly in the area of parks and recreation, we could use more focus down here. I think the county can learn a lot from us. As Brooks Patterson of the County Executive's Office said the other day, "If there's anything happening in the county, it's happening in Ferndale." I think that we in Hazel Park and Royal Oak and Ferndale can teach the county a lot. I think it's good to be noisy, to make ourselves known. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Covey. Ms. Gumbelton.
Well, I think for the 25th District, the county can do a lot. Primary thing that I'm running on is fighting foreclosures and maintaining our property values. Our county treasurer, Andy Meisner, has actually started a program where he's brought the United Way and lenders and citizens that are in trouble with their mortgages and need help, and brought the banks to the table. That's one thing the county can do. We can also help establish blight task force, like we've done here in Ferndale, where we bring residents and the citizens together to fight blight in the area and keep our community safe. Another area we're going to need to look at, and I know our interim chief has looked at, is animal control. As budgets get tighter, more county services are going to be needed for local municipalities, and we can look at that animal control, and we can look at increasing parks and recreation spending besides to the northern county. Thank you.
Ms. Gumbelton, Mr. McPherson.
Okay. I believe in the coming months ahead, we're going to see very bad things happening with our shortage of police and fire. I would do my best to get cooperation with the sheriff department and the state police to come in and be a support service where it's needed. We're border communities, Hazel Park and Ferndale, and the entertainment districts such as Royal Oak and Ferndale, we have a lot of things happening. We need a strong police department with knowledge of how to treat people, and I believe that in the south end, we have done quite a bit with the parks system. I helped push for the wave pool and the rebuild of the Red Oaks Golf Course. However, there's more important things to do in the area of recreation. Along the golf course to give support service, we should have other sports offered to the public when they go to golf. The parents could take their children there and do other activities. Other than that, I think one of the most important things is a business surtax. I'm a strong advocate of doing away with the small business surtax, which is very damaging to small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson. We'll begin the next question with Ms. Gumbelton. Same question to each of you. What do you feel is the biggest and first issue you want to address when elected?
Well, I've already started talking about it. It's the issue of foreclosures. My second issue is small jobs, so I'll go on to that. You know, I'm sorry, small business and jobs creation. We need to support our small businesses, and right now, there's a lot that we can do within the county. Small businesses are having problems accessing capital. We can work with our federal officials so that then the banks start lending again. In Oakland County, we've actually started a micro lending program. We need to increase that micro lending program. That allows business to gain capital, and it will also help to create jobs. Third thing we can do is on a county level, we need to start prioritizing our local businesses. That means for contracts and services, they should get a priority. The next thing that we can do is actually push for a county-first initiative and promote our local businesses through the internet and through our local communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gumbelton. Mr. McPherson.
I'm a firm believer in tax-based sharing similar to Minnesota plan. We don't have growth here. If we were going to have growth, where would we put it? We have to depend on the stronger parts of Oakland County to support the poor communities that don't have tax growth every year. I also believe that cooperation with the departments of Oakland County, we should have a plan to get all the road commission, the parks commission, the drains commission, all under one roof. We have executives at the top level, board members, and duplication. We have same equipment in one department and the other, and I think if we look at a situation where it could come under one roof and hire more of our people, and I think it would be beneficial and economically feasible, but it does need a lot of study. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson. Mr. Covey.
Thank you. You know, Oakland County, like Michigan, is suffering worldwide from the macroeconomic trends that are going on. There's a variety of ways that we can try to support the county and help keep the county strong. Number one is keeping millennials here, keeping young people here, keeping our next generation from moving to other states and other cities. And one of the most important ways to do that, I think, is to finally get off the dime and start to support mass transit in this region. This region has for too long ignored the issue of public transportation and effective mass transit. It's one of the reasons why we have declined from a world-class city, and I think Oakland County has been one of the areas that has not been helpful in that area. And so I think with some strong work from county commissioners and others in the county, we can start to lobby, we can start to make our voices heard, and we can get off the dime and start moving towards an effective mass transit situation. That would help small business, that would bring economic activity, that would keep young people in town.
Thank you, Mr. Covey. We'll begin the next question with Mr. McPherson. What can the county do to stop mortgage foreclosures and create jobs?
One of the best things to do is create jobs that pay a decent wage. People get in over their head and can't afford it. The mortgage companies and lending agencies have done a dis- trust injustice to our system. They okay the approval of sending lending money to a house that's very overinflated, and then as the time goes by, if they can't keep up with payments, the interest quadruples and doubles, and people just can't handle that cost. I think that overall, our communities have to be an attractive place, not only entertainment district, but a place to get good food and family atmospheres and good business locations to get a good haircut and barber shop, and small business that are really neighborhood-oriented and helpful to things that happen in a community.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson. Mr. Covey.
There's a lot of services out there. There's a variety of ways that people could be helped. Oakland County and the Oakland County Commission is not going to save tens of thousands of homes from foreclosure. We are part of a worldwide economic restructuring. It's not pleasant, it's not fun, and one of the things we have to understand is that government is not always going to be the answer. Just as our cities are short and cutting budgets, Oakland County is also looking at devastating cuts to its budget, just as the state of Michigan is, just as the federal government is. So we can certainly help people by letting them know of the programs that exist, but we are getting to a point where people have to understand that debt is not going to be helpful, that whether it's an individual homeowner, or a city, a county, a township, or a state, we all have to learn to live within our means. We can work with the federal government and try and get more support, and in Ferndale and Hazel Park, we were able to get a lot of homes bought up and rebuilt and then sold at good prices, but it's not going to be an easy answer.
Thank you, Mr. Covey. Ms. Gumbelton.
I think it's one of the county's biggest issues is fighting foreclosure. One, it keeps...we need to keep our cities and communities safe, but two, it is the biggest generator of revenue, and if we don't work on fighting foreclosures, it's going to be a bigger problem than we see right now. We have to take an active approach. Genesee County has been a leader in fighting foreclosures. You know, people have done the right thing and fought to stay in their homes. We have elderly and those on a fixed income. I just talked to a lady on Chesterfield the other night. She's done all the right things, and the home across the street is selling for $6,000. Her property values are going down, the neighborhood's going down. We need to fight for that. It's not just resources, but it's the leadership, because we need the revenue, and we need our neighborhoods and our communities to be safe, and we want our seniors to stay in their homes.
Thank you, Ms. Gumbelton. We'll begin the next question with Mr. Covey. On what issues do you believe you can achieve bipartisan consensus with Republicans?
It's a great question, and we absolutely need to have bipartisan working together. The mess in Lansing is a great example of how not to do the job, and on the Oakland County Commission, the vote currently is 13 to 12, Republican, Democrat. In the 11 years that I've held public office, I have reached out to all sides, certainly in Ferndale, and have worked with a variety of groups. I think it's important to find common ground. I think we can do that on environmental issues, because there's nothing more conservative than conserving our natural resources and protecting the environment. I think we can join liberals and conservatives together on that. It saves money, Republicans like that. I think there's other areas in terms of the budget, in terms of parks and recreation that we can work together, but most important is that people have to sit down and talk. They have to realize that everyone gets to come to the table, that seniors, that young people, that the gay community, that minorities, everyone is a part of the community, and together is the only way we'll ever be successful.
Mr. Covey, Ms. Gumbelton.
I think it's a real important issue, and at the county level, one of the things that they've done well over the last few years is actually working in a bipartisan way over the budget. They passed a budget, they have long-term planning for their budget, and they've worked together to not cut as many services and lay people off. One of the things that I value, and that's important to me, is getting the data that's needed to make the decisions, and you do that by talking to all sides. We had an issue here on SOS, and I sat down with residents, I sat down with business owners and officials, and listened to both sides, all sides. And I think you've got to find a common ground. Regional collaboration, you're going to have to reach across the aisle, but you're going to also have to cross the border. I've worked with people in Macomb County, Saint Clair County, and all through the state, and I'll continue to work in that manner, because I think we need to understand the issues and be serious about what we're doing to get the job done.
Thank you, Ms. Gumbelton. Mr. McPherson.
I've been on the commissioner level, and I get a lot of support from the other side of the aisle. I was even endorsed by Brooks Patterson in my Democratic elections. I served on SIMCOG, one of the best planning agencies. I was on the executive board of the whole country, and there were seven counties, and while I was on the Board of Commissioners, we had the top bond ratings, the best quality of life, and the leading county that was the economic engine that drove the economy in the state of Michigan. When the automotive industry failed, things went down, but we have a good organization in the automation alley, and I think we can coordinate a lot of business cooperation and bringing in business to relocate here and do rebuild on all these vacant industrial buildings and shopping malls.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson. We'll begin the next question with Ms. Gumbelton. What specific changes have you brought to South Oakland that have improved business development?
Improved business development, okay. Well, one, I've worked with the local businesses, and specifically in South Oakland, we've worked on the Downtown Development Authority. We've looked at funding, and what I'll do for South Oakland in the 25th District is what I've done across the region. I've worked in Macomb County with small businesses and with the Economic Development Authority, their county economic development and planning department, and the chamber to promote our businesses. And it's not just through attending events, it's actually through business planning, strategic planning, and applying for grants. I help businesses in Macomb County apply for federal grants regarding green jobs, and we can do that too in Macomb County. One thing that we need to look at, that I've looked at with the Michigan Municipal League, is starting an entrepreneurial incubator. We've done that, that's one of the things I did when I was on city council, and we'll continue that in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Gumbelton.
Do you want to keep the question?
Yes.
Sorry about that, but I was listening to their comments also.
What specific changes have you brought to South Oakland that have improved business development?
Well, looking in the past, when I was a county commissioner, I did get hood-linked on the development in Bloomfield Township, where we organized the developments through our economic development in Bloomfield Township in Pontiac to help stimulate the building and economic development, and what we see is vacant buildings. It was supposed to be a gigantic, great, tremendous thing, and we were convinced by the city of Pontiac and Brooks Patterson and most all the elected officials in Oakland County that we pursue this. They took all the steps, started construction, and they ran out of money. Like everybody, you can't get no money. There's no money in the till for federal grants or contributions and loans at low interest, and that's one of our problems. We have to have our congresspeople crack the whip and get that money released from the banks that we give them or loan to them, and I think that's what we have to do, is be persistent and make demands on our people to do that.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson. Mr. Covey.
Thank you. I like questions that ask for specific actions that people have actually taken as opposed to just words. Small business is not always helped just by government programs. Government is not always the solution. It's people, and one of the keys is to get people to stay in your community, to keep millennials from moving away, to bring people to your area. I helped secure the Motor City Pride Festival that came to the city of Ferndale, and that has grown to a point where it brings $1 million a year to the downtown businesses. Now, these are actual businesses, the restaurants, the bars, the clubs, the stores, these are small business owners. These are real people who are being...who are getting to be successful because of events, bringing together, for example, the annual Blues Festival. People think, "Oh, he's just having fun, he's putting on a music concert." No, we are bringing thousands of people to town, we're bringing talent, we're bringing music, we're bringing culture, and these small business owners are being kept in business because in the middle of the winter, they're able to have customers. So it's all about people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Covey. We'll begin the next question with Mr. McPherson. What specific experience do you have working with officials outside of Oakland County? How do you think this experience, if any, will better inform your decision-making as a county commissioner?
As I stated before, I was a representative for the county on SIMCOG. It's one of the greatest, most popular, and active planning agencies in this country, and we were competing with Boston and Silicon Valley, and now we finally reached our point that we are successful. Cooperation in doing things come with participating. I've also been active in wrestling, taking teams to the country of Iran, Canada, and other nations through cultural exchange. I've been doing that for 40 years. Most recently, I was selected to the Hall of Fame, the state of Michigan, for my contribution in wrestling and that effort, and also the National Wrestling Hall of Fame. I think that experience culturally with many nationalities bringing into our community showed our kids what it's like to converse with people who live in other countries and other states.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson. Mr. Covey.
Well, most of my work has been with other mayors, and I think mayors, more than some of their elected officials, know how it is to manage. They actually...the buck has to stop there, and they're actually multitasking. Although I've worked with both of our senators, I remember I worked with Senator Stabenow when she was still a county commissioner in Ingham County. But I've worked with mayors across the region, working...well, for example, I think that's why the mayor of Royal Oak has endorsed my campaign, as well as the mayor of Hazel Park. Jack Lloyd and Jim Ellison are both supporting my campaign. I brought Charles Pugh to meet with Oakland County mayors a couple of months ago. He has endorsed my campaign because he understands that I understand the importance of working across the counties. The different regions in Macomb County and Detroit have to work together. Former mayor Bob Porter has endorsed my campaign, Jim Razor from the Royal Oak City Council or City Commission. It's important that we connect and work together.
Thank you, Mr. Covey. Ms. Gumbelton.
You know, I think working across county lines is really important. I haven't just worked with mayors... I haven't just worked with mayors, I've worked with all elected officials and all business owners. I've worked with citizens, and I bring the experience to the commission. I'm not going to have to establish relationships with the county commissioners that are out there right now. I've already worked on projects with them. I know how to address our federal funding issues, I know how to work on appropriations, I know how to actually work on the grants. And beyond that, you know, we have to think regionally, and how this will affect us over time is really important. We're going to be sharing services, and it's not just for local municipalities, but I think it's important to start looking at southeast Michigan as a whole. That's how we're going to grow and make ourselves a world-class city. It's not just the county, it's the counties, it's the state, it's the nation.
Thank you, Ms. Gumbelton. We'll begin the next question with Mr. Covey. What can you do to bring more of our tax funding back to South Oakland?
Well, it's certainly lobbying, and it's relationships, what we just spoke about. As I said, the county commission now is split thirteen, twelve, Republican and Democrat. It's going to take bipartisanship. The county executive, Brooks Patterson, has asked me if I would sit on the citizens panel that will try to help get the millage renewed for the Parks and Rec Department, so there's already a relationship there. But I don't think it's really a point of this city fighting this city. We're all going to sink or swim together. And it's all about working together so that what is helpful for Hazel Park and helpful for Royal Oak and Ferndale is also going to lift the entire county up. We can't let Pontiac sink any further. We have to pay attention to Royal Oak Township and Southfield and all of the cities of the county, and certainly working across county lines. But it's basically relationships, it's meeting, talking to people, and knowing how the system works.
Mr. Covey, Ms. Gumbelton.
Well, I think one of the most important things is actually gathering the information. Not only do we have to have those relationships, but we've got to do our research. It's got to be based on data, not on a gut feeling. And beyond that, you know, we've got to work cooperatively to have southeast Michigan succeed. We've got to work on mass transit, foreclosure prevention, economic development, and sharing services. You know, I'm going to promote things like Clemis, which is in centralized dispatch services. We want to promote cross-county things regarding foreclosures. And I think one of the things that's going to move us into the future is looking at our emerging sectors. This is healthcare, this is green jobs, this is high tech. These are the employment opportunities of the future. This is something that the county is working on right now, and I think we need to continue that.
Thank you, Ms. Gumbelton. And Mr. McPherson.
As I stated before, I think the immediate, quick answer is tax-based sharing. You know, we don't have the large, open spaces that we can relocate large businesses, but we have other areas in the county that have great room for expansion, and we should really strongly consider enacting and ask our legislature to pass a law to allow for this. Also, I think that transportation is a key issue. I support mass transit, which would help development. I think that we should ask the colleges, and mostly community colleges, to work on trade issues that are skilled and to make people available for the job market. The medical field is going to soar in the next few years, as DMC is even being purchased by a very large company that would help our area, and I think we need people trained to fill those jobs that will be opening. Thank you.
Mr. McPherson, we'll begin the next question with Ms. Gumbelton. If elected, what type of environmental programs or proposals would you like to see the county create or perform, for example, expanding SACRA countywide?
I think that's a great question. You know, I had a great opportunity working at Senator Stabenow's office. One of the key issue areas that I worked on was the environment. I worked with the Sierra Club, I worked with Clean Water Action, I've worked with the Michigan Conservation Association. And one of the things, over and over again, that came back, we can do recycling. That's something we've got to keep doing and expanding. Most of our cities are not doing it at the rate that we could, so we can promote that minimally. Beyond that, we've got to look at our water quality, where and how our water is treated. One of the things we fund now is golf courses. Golf courses are one of the worst things for the environment. What Saginaw Bay has done recently is they passed an ordinance on fertilization. And what they started to do so it wouldn't impact businesses is they started tagging the fertilizer in the stores so the residents, one, could get educated, and, two, know what to do and make better choices. And that's a start that we can do that doesn't cost much.
Thank you, Ms. Gumbelton. Mr. McPherson.
My activities in the past prove out how my statements are on energy and environment. The incinerator that was in Madison Heights, I was one of the strong supporters of eliminating and stopping and successfully have the incinerator shut down. I believe in strong enforcement of the septic systems in Oakland County, which affects our Great Lakes. Eventually, it all ends in our Great Lakes. The failure of septic tanks, the pollution of water, the runoff of water, I think we should try to get an ordinance for jail time and severe fines for those who knowingly pollute and allow this to happen. I also served on the restaurant and food in the area of Oakland County and enforcement of good-quality establishments. Also, I believe in energy is one of the strong points of air in green development, which will assist in that effort.
Mr. McPherson, Mr. Covey.
Nothing will help the environment more than if we can finally wean ourselves off of the idea of every single person driving their car every time they need to go somewhere, and that means mass public transit. We need to start now and move on that. I also support a program called Complete Streets, and that is the concept that streets are not just for cars and trucks, but streets are also for buses, they're for trains, they're for bicycles, they're for pedestrians. We have to make our streets livable, and a street is not just to get from A to B, but it's part of the community. I haven't heard anyone talk about urban sprawl, but that's one of the things that I have fought against as the mayor and a councilman, and will at the county commission. Sprawl is waste. What we need to do is fix it first policies, that is, to fix up what we've got already and stop spreading out into the farmlands. I too have worked with the Sierra Club and the Green Cruz. I suspect because of my history of working with the environment is why the Sierra Club has endorsed me in this election. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Covey. We'll begin the next question with Mr. McPherson. Can you point to cost-saving measures you initiated while in your previous office or job?
Well, cost savings, which I participated in and sometimes not too successful, was privatization. I think our county started to go into the wrong direction, and I pushed for, if we're going to do privatization, to start with management, and it slowed it down a little bit. I believe that we should keep people employed in our county and city governments to be real concerned about with what goes on. I think economically, what we contribute is to provide good-quality golf courses, good-quality recreation, good quality of life, and that helps the economy where people come and build restaurants and businesses and see something that looks like a good future instead of being a vacant community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson. Mr. Covey.
Thanks. As a mayor and on the city council, we did a number of things. We instituted a new energy use system that reduced energy use for the city. Just recently, the city council, all the members, as well as all non-union employees in Ferndale, took a 5% pay cut. We are trying to get concessions from some of the unions so that we can share the pain instead of laying people off. I think one of the ways I tried to save money, but failed unfortunately, two years ago, the city of Ferndale embarked on a process that they were going to look at building a brand-new courthouse, rebuilding a new police department, and totally renovating City Hall. This was right in the middle of the upcoming recession. It would have cost us $9 million. While we were able to get it stopped, unfortunately, for two years, the city council voted time and time again to vote for consultants and studies and surveys, and we wasted $110,000 that could have been a police officer. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Covey. Ms. Gumbelton.
Well, cost-saving measures that I helped to work on, first of all, when I started on city council, we didn't do any strategic planning, there was no goal setting, there's no long-term budget planning. And as a council member and as a business owner, I was shocked that that never had been instituted. And what I did is started the process, and now we're doing much more effective and efficient planning that will save us on the long term for years to come. This is what Oakland County does, and this is something I started here in Ferndale. Beyond that, getting all the information. You know, I hate to even remark on the comments Craig had made, but some of the facts are inaccurate. You know, it wasn't a $9 million endeavor. We voted to look at the best way to spend our money in the city. Nobody ever voted for anything that costs that amount of money. And many of the residents and council members wanted to take the process longer so that we could get all the facts.
Thank you, Ms. Gumbelton. We'll begin the next question with Mr. Covey, which coincidentally dovetails in nicely with your last comment. Which Oakland County buildings will you hire a consultant to rebuild?
Which Oakland County buildings would I hire a consultant to rebuild? The truth is, not knowing all of the Oakland County buildings, I would probably lean against hiring any consultants right now to rebuild any of them. I say that not because I'm against renovation, I am for renovation, certainly better than building brand-new buildings. People need to understand that we are in the midst of a worldwide great recession, and it's not going to get any better. What we have to do is focus on services, and that includes sheriff, that includes fixing the roads, that includes police and fire. We're going to have to make do with the buildings we have right now. I'm not against all consultants, but I'm against using money for surveys and consultants and planning if and when you don't necessarily need to do that. You can use your own staff, you can use your own intelligence, and you can use your own common sense. The city of Ferndale did spend $110,000 on planning and consultants for that three-building project, which is now gone.
Mr. Covey, Ms. Gumbelton.
Can you repeat the question?
Yes. Which Oakland County buildings will you hire a consultant to rebuild?
Yeah, I just can't believe the question. So I will look at all the issues, and as things come about, I will look at the facts. And part of looking at what needs to be rebuilt or maintained is looking at our tax dollars. Is it smarter to actually maintain an old building or to renovate it? Is it smart to not have a lawsuit in a courthouse because it is not handicap accessible? Is it energy-efficient to maintain our buildings here or to renovate them? We have to look at the long-term planning, and we have to get beyond petty comments. It just doesn't work in government, we've seen it in Lansing, we've seen it at the federal level. We need to look at the facts, we need to look at the issues, and not go on our gut, but talk to people, find out the real facts, and really how we should spend the dollars.
Ms. Gumbelton, Mr. McPherson.
I think in-house, our county probably has many consultants. With on our staff, with all the planning departments of the road commission, the drain commission, you know, all those things put together, I think we could do most of it in-house. However, I don't think we should curtail not getting any consultants. As far as what building should we build, we have, you know, a good jail, we have a new courthouse that took over from the elementary education school, and we need more fieldhouse-type activities, you know, on the golf courses for people to come at that massive amount of property to participate in other activities. I think other buildings at Oakland County, we should have a consultant for Oakland County, the ones that we hired weren't very good when we went on that project up in Pontiac and Bloomfield. But I think you engage in a very large project and one that will provide tax base, I think that you definitely have to have a consultant.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson. We'll start the next question with Ms. Gumbelton. What do you think is not happening in Oakland County that you plan to fix?
Well, I think one of the things that we've got to look at is working across regional lines. I think right now, we do have officials that reach across the line, but we can start expanding that in how we promote business through the region. Oakland County has a great program, the Main Street Program, and we've been really successful in bringing local dollars to our downtowns. We've seen that in Ferndale, and it's helped to revitalize the community. We could look at expanding and sharing ideas across the region. There is a tri-county summit that happens every year, but we really need to be doing that more often. So business is one area, healthcare is another area, mass transit. Right now, we're looking at the Smart Millage renewal. One thing we've done successfully is the Detroit Zoo. That came together as a regional collaboration, and that's something that we can be looking at at a county level.
Thank you, Ms. Gumbelton. Mr. McPherson.
Okay, what we can do at large at the county level is to get all these communities together, and the county should be the leadership role into how we can combine other departments and work together without eliminating the city workers and township workers. But I think we need some leadership in that area. One thing the county is lacking in is if they wanted to help a community that goes bankrupt, they don't have a fire department. I think they ought to study things, how to coordinate efforts in that area. And I think other things that they could do is look at their health department and have more satellite offices down in the south end because the bus transportation and other transportation isn't very good to go where all the good hospitals are and other medical buildings and other job opportunities for the welfare recipient offices. They're, most everywhere they go, they have to have a long time to get there, and they have a long wait.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson. Mr. Covey.
Thanks. Smart cities and smart counties know that urban sprawl is an idea that as time has passed. This is something that came about in the 50s and the 60s, and its time has ended. We need to understand and show leadership that building new roads and new sewers and new water lines and new libraries and new schools and new subdivisions out in the middle of cornfields is absolutely unsustainable. We should get the county united behind the idea of fixing what we have first, keeping in mind that mass transportation and public transit is absolutely critical to our city. And finally, I say it again, we have to get the county to understand that we are all one people, that the people in the north end and the south end, Asian-Americans, Arabic-Americans, white Americans, blacks, gays and lesbians, rich and poor, we can work together. And that takes leadership to demonstrate that we are one people, and with the strength that comes from that unification, we can do amazing things and become a world-class region again.
Mr. Covey, we'll begin the next question with Mr. McPherson. I believe that the strength of our cities is critical in Michigan's future recovery. What will you, as county commissioner, do to help stabilize the cities?
Well, to stabilize a community, you have to have good opportunities for jobs, education, and health. I think stabilizing the cities, you need money. The revenue sharing from state and federal has dried up, and you have to be creative. And to create something in the cities that have no place to build, we have to depend on our neighborhood cities to coordinate and cooperate with us on other matters. Combine DPS with the county, they could have the equipment, the cities have this equipment, they have the same equipment. Some communities, they only have the operators to operate the machines that they have sitting getting rusty. And I think the road commission's getting in that position also. And I think we need an overall study and perhaps think of a gigantic county system, you know, to be the super-government power of, you know, of cooperation and possibly taking over some other type of activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson. Mr. Covey. Mr. Covey?
We have a tough time in the region because when our cities grew and were formed, they really were balkanized in the sense that there are many, many little towns and cities and townships around. Mr. McPherson is correct when he talks about the idea of sharing resources, and in some counties, some very far-thinking folks have understood that you need to join together some of these communities and have a more equitable tax base and an equitable tax rate and an equitable sharing of those resources. I think the county can show leadership. Again, the city of Ferndale is trying to work with the city of Hazel Park and other neighboring towns to share fire resources, but things get in the way. Sometimes we need a higher authority that can help us out. Oakland County can lobby the state as well and get rid of some of the rules and issues that prevent what we're trying to do. But I think we can demonstrate success, care for the cities that are at risk, and validate the cities across the region, including those that are having a tougher time. These are tough towns, but these are tough people that live in these towns, and Hazel Park, Ferndale, and Royal Oak can show the rest of the county how to do it right.
Thank you, Mr. Covey, and Ms. Gumbelton.
I think what we need to be doing is working regionally. Stabilizing cities is going to be a tough issue. We all know budgets are tight. A lot of what's going on in the city is we're cutting things, we're cutting services, and it's going to fall into the county's hands. As I mentioned before, one of the things that we're going to look at is providing basic services such as animal control. We can look at shared services for police and fire authorities. We need to be working on getting more of the federal dollars back to our communities. One of the main things we need to do is fight foreclosures. That's the biggest thing that goes into the county budget, and we've got to build businesses. You know, that revenue goes right to the city, and we need to work on that. So, not only do we have to look at being smart in how we manage our government and plan for our future, we've got to look at how we bring those revenues in.
Thank you, Ms. Gumbelton. We'll begin the last question now with Mr. Covey, kind of a straightforward question. What makes you the best choice for the seat?
Well, I respect all of the candidates running for this seat. I think we're all good people. I would focus, I guess, on accomplishments and real-world success. It's easy for all of us to talk about what we want to do and how we know this and we know that, but I would ask people to go back and look. Look at the history, look at what we have done, look at our literature. I have a website with a ton of information that represents about 25 years of work that I've done and accomplishments. It's at www.coveforOakland.com. And I would suggest you look at the other, if the other candidates have websites, but look to see what we've actually done, see what we have accomplished. I'm very proud of the work that we have done, but I think it's important that we are accessible. I think you want your county commissioner to be someone that you can reach. Do you have their email address? Can you get their phone number? Is there a website you can contact them from? Thank you.
Mr. Covey, Ms. Gumbelton?
You know, I'm uniquely qualified to be a county commissioner. I'm the only person up here who's worked on a local, state, and federal level, and I bring that up because that's important. I know how government works, I know how to get it done. I don't have to learn on the job once I get to the county level. I've worked in the small-business arena, and I've produced results. I manage my own life. I have a son who's 17-years-old, Ryan, and I manage being involved in my community, my business, and government. You know, I've worked at a regional level for Senator Stabenow, and I think that's important because I've gained a lot of insight of what other communities are doing and what's successful, and I can bring that to the commission. Not only that, I can pick up the phone and call people throughout the state and find an answer when I need it because we have those relationships. I've worked on issues that are important to county residents, K-12 education, the environment, jobs, green jobs, and growing our economy.
Thank you, Ms. Gumbelton, and Mr. McPherson?
I feel my background and experience as a councilman in the city of Hazel Park and my example of being a county commissioner that's very active and cooperative with the other side of the aisle, I think I can get things passed and things done. I served on many committees in the county, and I have had a great education on the job-type thing where it helps you to get decision-making done the right way. I feel that having a family of six kids in these troubled times, or five kids rather, I'm sorry, and eight grandchildren, I had all the troubles and turmoil that everybody else had. We had good times and we had bad times, but we have had more good times than bad times. This is really a bad time to try to raise a family, get an education, and raise your family, and I think we hit the bottom, really, and I think we are on the upswing.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson. That concludes the time for questions. The candidates will now be given one minute to make a closing statement in the inverse order of the opening statements. We'll begin the closing statements with Mr. McPherson.
Just one thing to say is that I have the experience. I'm a senior citizen, I'm 73-years-old, but I'm very energetic in my background of athletics and working with people. I served on Oakland Livingston Service Agency and is one of the best support services for human services in the state of Michigan. My father and my parents were active in scouting, my mother was active in the VFW, my brother was a former fire marshal, and we all believed in service to humanity. And I think being active and belonging to service clubs, Kiwanis, I was president, the past president of Kiwanis Club, and my daughter, she was always active in recycling and active any community event that happened, she's always there, and through our parents, we learned to help the community, and that's my idea why I think I can serve the best.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson. Ms. Gumbelton?
I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event and giving the residents an opportunity to ask the questions that are important to them. As I said before, I'm running for county commissioner because I care deeply for our community, and I feel that we need real leadership. We need people that take this job seriously and actually do the work. I'm progressive, I'm hard-working, and I'll get the job done. I've been in the small-business world, I've also been on a local, state, and federal level in government. I believe in regional collaboration, I believe in growing our economy. I believe I'm the only candidate up here who's walked the entire district and has been out talking to all the residents, and we're going to keep walking because we want to hear what you have to say. We do have a website, friendsatmico.com, we do have a Facebook page, and I do have a phone number. So, please, consider me on August 3rd for your vote, and thank you for the time, to share with you, and for coming out. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Gumbelton. Mr. Covey?
As I've walked across the district and met voters in Hazel Park and Royal Oak, I'm getting a very good reception, but as I'm talking to folks in Ferndale, I keep hearing the same thing. They say, "You want to leave? Who will be the mayor? We don't want to lose you, we don't want you to go." I understand that, and I will, of course, follow the wishes and the wisdom of the voters in Ferndale, Hazel Park, and Royal Oak. But I am doing this because I want to do more. I want to take what has been so successful in Ferndale and try to make that happen across our great Oakland County. I'm not going anywhere. I'll still be here, living and working and being creative and active and fighting to make our little neck of the woods popular, successful, and fun. I'll always be fighting for the little guy, the labor, supporting creative new ways of doing things, always including everybody at the table, supporting and guarding our Mother Earth, watching the taxpayer dollars like a hawk. I ask for your votes on Tuesday, August 3rd, so I can take on this important challenge. Thank you kindly.
Thank you, Mr. Covey, and the League would like to thank all the candidates and the audience here tonight, and we'd like to thank Wide Open West and Comcast Cable for making, for taping and rebroadcasting this forum. On Comcast, you can see it on Channel 53, on Wide Open West on Channel 18, and you can go to the city of Ferndale's website at Ferndale-MI.com. Under the heading Services, look for Cable Video, and you can see it live on demand on the internet. You can also check information on these and other candidates at the League's website, And when known, rebroadcast times of this forum will be on the League website as well. Please remember to vote on August 3rd. Democracy is not a spectator sport. Thank you and good evening.[1787.71][1787.71][applause]